All right, good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 PM, December 11th, 2025, and I'd like to welcome everyone in the room and those who are participating online as I call to order this meeting of the Bellebrook-Sugar Creek Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. We value everyone's input, and have made sure to dedicate a portion of this meeting to hear from you. Just in case you missed it, anybody wishing to speak tonight, there's a sign-in sheet up by the door. We look forward to your comments during that time, as it's indicated on our agenda. So with that, Mr. Gotham, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Dawn?
Here.
Mr. Kinsey?
Present.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Dr. Pryor?
Present.
Five present.
All right, we have a quorum. If you're able, will you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gotham, if you can kick it off with the next president. My first item is approval of November 13, 2025, board minutes.
Second.
Approved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Dr. Pryor. Anybody have any questions or corrections? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Five yeses. My second item is approval of November 17, 2025, board minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Pryor, then Mrs. Dorn. Again, questions, corrections? Please call the vote.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Abstain, I was at OSBA.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Four yes, one abstain. My next item is Treasures Report for the month of November 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson, then Dr. Pryor.
So, we have about forty-two percent of the fiscal year over. Our revenues and expenditures are in line, revenues are just a bit higher, expenditures are a bit lower, that's how we want it to be. We don't want to be overspending, and that's what's not happening. The only big item would be on cash. If you look at the reconciliation, our cash went down, and that's because we paid off the debt. We have annual principal payments due in November, so we paid about almost three million dollars in principal payments, so cash went down by about three million dollars.
In case you're wondering, that debt's for the middle school, right?
Yeah, middle school.
I have a question. Are you done, or do you have some other things you're going to talk about with the...
No, I'm done, yeah.
So, you know, for the, on page three of what we have before us, which the public can have as well, it has the pie chart of our revenue sources. Normally, we talk about, you know, we get about, you know, twenty-three percent of our silver funding from the state, correct?
Yes.
And, but that's with a state foundation as well as other, it's part of that state and federal assistance, so that's kind of a mixture in there, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, but we'll tie it at about twenty-four percent.
Is it consistent to say we normally get about sixty-seven percent or more? I thought it was a little bit higher that we actually got from real estate taxes. This seems a little bit lower than what I thought.
So, we get two settlements for property taxes, once in August and once February. February is about fifty-five percent and August forty-five percent. So we've got forty-five percent of the taxes, we'll get the fifty-five in February, and that's when the percentage will go up.
We'll go up into probably in the seventies, probably.
Yeah, yeah, about, yeah. It will go really high in February because, you know, we'll get all of our property taxes for the year.
Okay.
And then by June, it should level out to normal.
Okay, okay. Very good, thank you. Other questions for Mr. Gotham? Okay, Treasures Report was moved by Mrs. Anderson, seconded by Dr. Pryor, please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Five yeses. My next resolution is to join the Ohio Purchasing Council.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Dorn.
So, we are, we are getting ready to start some HVAC projects around the school district, and the company we've picked is part of Ohio Purchasing Council. So what that does is it's a co-op of school districts, a local governments, and by joining the co-op, we don't have to go through the bidding requirements, we don't have to have a project engineer, so it saves a lot of time and money on our part, and the co-op does all the, all the bidding requirements, all the compliance requirements on the districts
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
It's five yeses. My next resolution, request is for approval of a resolution awarding HVAC project to Prodigy Building Solutions in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, then Mrs. Anderson.
So, basically, the, this project is for BCI, we will replace a chiller over there and ice tanks over there, and then at Steven Bell Elementary, we'll go from our air-cool system to a water-cool system. Right now, the air-cool system isn't working perfectly, the temperatures sometimes go up to one hundred and eight degrees for air-cool, and that means the system doesn't work, like it's just hot air going in. So by going to water-cool, we should have better AC at Steven Bell Elementary.
And they're supposed to have this done by middle of July, but before next school year, so this process will be starting real soon.
And we probably remember, everybody else might not, I'm sure everybody watches every minute of every one of these board meetings. This was one of those things that was identified in the seven-year facilities plan that I know has been kind of budgeted for, for a while, and been in the works and planning. We moved some money to a different fund in order to pay out for this, right?
Yep.
All right. Any questions, any other comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Five yeses. My next request is for change order to Starko in the amount of thirty-eight thousand ninety-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, then Mrs. Anderson.
So, this is related to the high school project, we're replacing the ice storage tanks over there. Initially, the, the drawings were for four-inch pipes, the six-inch pipes will work better, so it's the change in pipe fittings, that's what's costing extra money. The engineer will donate us ten thousand five hundred dollars, so the actual cost would be twenty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars to the district, so engineer will give us ten thousand five hundred dollars, so we're only paying twenty-seven thousand dollars. But we'll pay the full bill to Starko, and then engineer, engineer should give us before the fiscal year end, ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, anything else, sir?
That's all I have.
That's all the HVAC stuff that you have?
That's all I have.
All the HVAC, okay.
That's all the money we have.
Good answer.
All right, thank you for tonight's Treasures Report. We'll now move into correspondence. Did anybody receive anything you'd like to share for the good of the board, especially if it's something that not all of us saw? We're all caught up, all right, very good. Now we get to move into something more fun. Appreciate everybody being here, let me take a long walk. We have a few special students and student athletes and staff members to honor tonight. I would like to first welcome up somebody being honored for making the 2025 girls soccer all-state team, Mara Donner. I wanted to put you on the spot, if you want to say a few words, we may introduce anybody in the camp. Yes, as a National Merit Commended Student for 2025, Emma Wolfenberger. And second National Merit Commended Student, Erin Seguon. And this is a special honor, you won't know this is incredibly difficult to achieve, but we have two National Merits semifinalists. First is Katie Prendergast.
I'd like to thank all my teachers and my parents, and I'm really lucky that I've gone to the schools.
Honoring another National Merit semifinalist here and there. And we would like to recognize somebody retiring this year, it would be very sad to see her go. Twenty years of service to the students of the Bellebrook-Sugar Creek School District, Shannon Shelber.
It's been a great twenty years here driving the kids around Bellebrook. I won't miss the cold, dark mornings, but I will miss the kids and the people.
I would also like to recognize Mr. Tom Fryman for thirty-one years of service in our maintenance department, managing the maintenance department. He couldn't be with us tonight, I know he just had shoulder surgery, but we'd definitely like to get him around. So we have a lot more business to get to, however, if anybody wants to go, dairy shed's open now, even though it's kind of cold, we understand. We won't have any hard feelings, if you need to get on with your evening, we can just pause for a second if anybody doesn't want to stick around, but so glad that our students and our retiree was able to join us today.
Mr. Kinsey, did you miss Steven Bell?
What did I miss?
Steven Bell Bronze Award.
Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Oh, I might have missed something, we'll get to that in just a second.
Okay.
Do you mind doing that?
Sure, yep. All right. So we also have a special award for Steven Bell, they are the State of Ohio PBIS Bronze Award winner, so Ms. Keaton and Mrs. Hebrink, if you want to come on up. Congratulations, you want to talk a second about the Bronze Award from the State of Ohio, just what that means and so forth?
PBIS stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Support, and there are three tiers to it. Steven Bell Elementary has been working tirelessly for the past decade, and it's a joint effort, and we are very proud of working with our staff, our students, and the community. Dr. Cosad brought in Focus Three, we made an alignment, shifted K to twelve, and it's a very robust program, bringing on our very first Assistant Principal has been an incredible endeavor, and Mrs. Hebrink has been instrumental in bringing about Tier Two supports to our students, that made all the difference, and we're very proud of this accomplishment. We appreciate the support of our school board. You have heard PBIS presentations multiple times over the years from our teachers, and so the students are the ones that made the awards. So it's a high honor to be recognized by the State Department, not many districts are recognized, it's a very laborious process to go through the application, and Mrs. Hebrink took on a tedious task of the application, so huge credit to Mrs. Hebrink for that time and commitment. Thank you.
All right, we do not have any reports to the board tonight, so that means we're going to move into our open going to move into our open communication. Somebody wouldn't mind handing me our list of guests tonight, uh, because your thoughts and comments are welcome during this time. Uh, there was a sign-in sheet just up there for anybody who wanted to speak. When you're given the floor, you could please share your name, your address, and any group affiliation you hold if it's relevant. You'll then have five minutes for your comments, which should be directed toward the presiding officer, who tonight happens to be me. This time is for the board to listen and absorb. As such, traditionally, a dialogue is not created in this moment. In case you're wondering, the reason for these policies, which can be read in their entirety on the district's website and Policy Number One Six Nine Dot Nine One, is to ensure that as many people as possible have the opportunity to speak and that everyone is treated equally and fairly. With that, we'd like to welcome our first guest, Mr. David Buckle. Uh, anywhere you like, but there's a microphone up there. That wa- that way the folks watching online can hear you. We appreciate you being here, and you have five minutes.
One is I appreciate the improvements that this school district has made to special, um, in this, you know, when you're dealing with kids with special needs. At one time, it was a train wreck, and it's, and I do appreciate it. The next thing is I sat through two presentations about the ESC. And then I contacted Terry Streeter at the ESC, went over it, and she strongly contested all the content presentations. I'm concerned. And I'm, I'm a little nervous. Um, I'm very concerned that there's a concerted smear campaign going on against the ESC out of people whose primary interest is in tearing down that building and, uh, obtaining control of the entire property. I know the school board is instrumental in that, and I'm asking the school board to look out for the interests of the ESC, which services people from Belbrook and Sugar Creek, which is an important part of our educational system. And also, I'm concerned about public integrity issues as it pertains to the city of Belbrook. I know you're not the city of Belbrook, but if you're dealing with them, and there's people within the city organization who are tainted by conflicts of interest and integrity issues, and you're dealing with them, you may be, um, they're doing it because they want to influence you, and I would hope that you would resist that influence. I'm not going to go into the details to why I feel that way, not here, not tonight, but I'd be happy to share with any of you. Um, the, um, I, I guess that's it. You get what I'm saying? Y'all get it? You do get it, right? Who am I talking about? Yes, no? I like the Lions Club, but I think they're being used, and, um, things being said about the ESC are factually, um, they're not correct. They're just not factual, even if the people saying them seem to be, you know, well motivated. That's it? That's why I came?
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Uh, up next, I'd like to welcome Paul Santoro. Thank you for being here, sir. You have five minutes.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with you. I'd just like to, uh, take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to Dr. Cosad, his leadership, and his excellent staff and outstanding teachers for their faithful commitment to our children in this community. They are equipping our kids for a bright future, and we've seen the fruit of that work. And we're very, very encouraged, and I'm deeply, deeply grateful for that. Thank you very much. I also want to thank, um, President Mike Kinsey and the entire school board for protecting our children from inappropriate explicit material and for upholding our parental rights and parental authority. What I'm sharing here is not ideological, political. It just comes from a deep-seated heart of faith, and I just give you an insight into why I believe what I believe. I'm, um, pastor of Christ Church, and, uh, I direct the Belbrook Sugar Creek Ministerial Association, and, um, I'm involved in this community, and I love this community. It's just a wonderful place, place with some incredible people, dedicated people, committed people. The, I'm going to give you the perspective of, of, um, of a Christian and a leader. The biblical teachings of the Holy Scriptures emphasize that parents hold the primary responsibility for raising their children. Christian parents are under a direct divine trust and mandate from God. This also applies to Jews as well, from, uh, the Old Testament, Proverbs Twenty-Two. It admonishes us to train up our children in the way they should go, and when they are old, they will not depart from it. This is a parental prerogative and responsibility that we take very seriously as parents. When our culture conflicts or clashes with our biblical teaching, we believers must choose God over government. We are not deliberately or openly rebellious. We cooperate. We give to Caesar what is Caesar's, but we must give to God what is God's. Christian parents carry a sacred responsibility before God to raise their children in the nurture and in the admonition of the Lord, St. Paul says. Parents are to inculcate their cherished and deeply held values in their children. Scripture teaches that children are a gift from God, entrusted to our care, and parents, not the state, will ultimately give and account to God for how they guided, protected, and shaped the hearts and the minds of their sons and daughters. Parents, then, are accountable for the spiritual and character formation of their children, and we are to model that to our children as well. So there's many response, there are many responsibilities incumbent upon us, uh, who are Christian parents. Because of this divine calling, Christian parents must be vigilant guardians of what their children see, hear, and are taught. Children are exposed to explicit or morally harmful material. Parents have not only the right, but the God-given responsibility to intervene, to speak up, and to shield their children from content that distorts purity, undermines innocence, and contradicts biblical truth. Protecting our children is not optional. It is an act of obedience before Almighty God. In a culture that is increasingly normalizing what God calls destructive, Christian parents must stand firm, exercising their rightful authority and honoring their accountability before the Lord. Our children's hearts, minds, and futures are at stake, and God has entrusted them first and foremost to us, their parents. And, um, once again, I'm very grateful for this community. I'm very grateful for this school board, and I'm very grateful for our schools. And my hope and prayer is that we step up and partner with them to make our schools even better. We emphasize excellence, which is truly extraordinary, and I want to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity to speak here, and God bless you all.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, I'd like to welcome Sharon Hawkes. Thank you for being here. You have five minutes.
Hi, thank you. I think it's interesting that as a Christian myself, we can come at this with slightly different, uh, points of view. I'm Sharon Hawkes, and I direct Right to Ohio to support librarians and the work they do. The last time I spoke here, it was to tell you that opting students in instead of out is unconstitutional. Still is. Since then, we've learned that books have been removed from their intended audience here, and that is a book ban. And other books, uh, require parental permission. That's also a type of censorship, restricting books. The list of one hundred and thirty banned and restricted books shows that bias instead of professional curation gets in the way of choosing the best books for a library collection. So I thought I'd bring a few, a little show and tell. This one is called No Girls Allowed: Tales of Daring Women Dressed as Men, published in two thousand eight. It's not about trans men, and there's no sex in the book. It's about women who did brave deeds that could only be done by men in their time. One of them in this book is Mulan. Ever heard of her? This one. It's called Turtles All the Way Down, published in twenty seventeen, discusses mental health, including gender. But they're not having sex. In fact, one of them is asexual, okay? This one. The Bluest Eye, published in nineteen seventy, is by Nobel Prize-winning Ohioan Toni Morrison. This state recognizes Toni Morrison Day on February eighteenth. Seems a shame to not include her first novel, which often makes the AP English Lit list. And this one, Slaughterhouse-Five, published in nineteen sixty-nine by Kurt Vonnegut, is notable as one of eleven books that were banned from the Island Tree School District in New York in the late seventies. The Supreme Court ruled in nineteen eighty-two that these books could not be removed. The school board there said they were anti-American, anti-Christian, anti-Semitic, and just plain filthy. They could not be removed. In two thousand three, Texas added in Counts v. Cedarville, a decision there, that it's unconstitutional to restrict books from student access by requiring parental permission. All of these books are award winners. All of them were published, by the way, before twenty twenty. One of you had said that, uh, gender and sexuality content was first introduced in libraries in twenty twenty, and then it all went downhill after that. It's not true. From the list that we received in records requests, we could see that they were already circulating before twenty twenty. All of these books make students think. None of them are obscene in the legal definition of the word. Your librarians, by the way, are to be commended. The book list indicates that they have been doing the right thing, adding important and relevant books and removing books when they're damaged, out of date, or of low circulation. So if that is, you know, the criteria for removing books, if parents are just telling their teenagers, since most of these are in the teen section, and now all of them are in the high school, then if nobody's taking them out, then they will be weeded away. But what you're doing is imposing the removal of books, and that's a problem, or the restriction of the same. Part of what literature does is safely introduce students to society with all its complexities. Who gets hurt if you just take a few topics away? Students who are living these topics, the students who want to learn about these topics, and the rest of us, by saying that certain topics and certain people are not worth talking about. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, I believe Jennifer Santoro. Thank you for being here. You have five minutes.
Thank you. So one of the things I wanted to share, the reason why I want to share, is that we were here at the last meeting, and we were very grateful for what the board had done. And one of the discussions was about sexual content teaching of the kids at third grade and sixth grade, and they were bumping it up to eighth grade. And it's my understanding that there are people who are requesting that that actually be reversed, and we actually give sex education to three-year-olds and expose them to some very explicit information. I have a problem with that because I've counseled and taught for over thirty years. A lot of my counseling is with families who have had children who have actually been abused sexually, many times by just friends, many times by babysitters, sometimes just families, brothers and sisters, who have been exposed to explicit sexual material, books with fa- with pictures that kids act out. This is just a natural thing that kids do. We all know that. We also know that our children can be affected by what they see when they're not emotionally ready to see it. At third grade and excess sixth grade, some of the information we're getting, and our kids are getting, is not appropriate for them. Emotionally, they're not developed enough to really know what to do with that information. And we see them really, really struggling. I've known of kids who were ex- wonderful students, seventh grade, eighth grade, who started watching pornographic material or sexually explicit material, and it actually dropped their grades. It got to the point where these kids were not able to function. They couldn't focus anymore. This was, this was in their minds. They could just go, well, they were looking for porn every time. They were looking for social media sites. Now we want to give it to our kids at school. At third grade, how many of us as parents want our children to be exposed to explicitly mat- explicit material, especially graphic material, at that age? Even at sixth grade? It's my responsibility as a parent to teach our kids, and somehow I get the feeling that with what we're teaching in the schools, and yes, it's okay to have certain material in our library. We don't want to ban all of it, but we should have a right as parents to decide when our kids are emotionally ready to hear certain material, certain information about our sexual development or what people do or don't do. But some of it is inappropriate, and so I'm coming from the standpoint of a counselor. It's devastating. It scars our children. It scars the parents. I've spoken to parents who have actually seen their kids just walk in on a bedroom and watch them engage in something that they saw in a book at school, information they were given by teachers at school. So that's why I want to speak today is please, people, we don't want to hypersexualize our children. There's enough contact out there with social media that we're dealing with. We don't need to have it forced it on our kids in our education system at such young ages. Such education is fine when they're older, when they're emotionally developed and know what to do with it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Up next is Ron Miller. Thank you for being here. You have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm Ron Miller, Snyder Court. I appreciate the, uh, being here right now. I appreciate the board. So I guess I'm coming at it from a little different perspective, and, uh, rather than talking about specific policy, the board itself, the, uh, the board, they make their, uh, they make their values, they make their point of views, they make, they make their positions very clear to the community. The community elects them overwhelmingly. Most of you have been elected to the board, um, once again, making your positions completely known. So I was actually worried I was going to come here, and there, there was going to be a lot of, of, uh, controversy, and so I appreciate the, uh, the perspectives of the folks before me. But my personal perspective is, we appreciate the board. We would like the board to continue to promote your values. That's, that's what the community's voted on. Please do so, and, uh, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Up next, I'd like to welcome Greta Schumacher. Thanks for being here. You have five minutes.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Greta Schumacher. I live in the Landings, and I've been here for the past half year. It's great to see everyone. It's great to see so many people come out here, especially the young students, because this is all about them. And last time I spoke on finding a compromise for the parental rights policy. And I do appreciate that. Like I said last time, it's great to hear that students will be opted in automatically if parents want. However, the more I look at it- However, the more I look at it, it's just, I feel like we can find more common ground, and I'm hoping to achieve that, not tonight, but over the next few times, maybe for the next school year. Because the one thing is transparency. So we have, I, I think we can improve on that, and it's, I appreciate the emails I've gotten and the lists, but again, a public records list was asked for, and I wish the board would have just put it out, correct me if I'm wrong about that, but it's, um, important as parents, as a parent who has rights, to see the books that's been affected. And with that list, I notice a lot of the books, and I don't quite understand how it aligns with the policy and why they've been removed. Like The Kite Runner, for example. It's a book about Afghan culture, different cultures, which I think we all need to learn from and learn about, so we can look at all the boards, what we have, a great school, a great education, but a lot of it is also cultural competence, because unfortunately, the world has changed. Maybe unfortunately, I think it's a good thing. It's more global. We need to learn more about that, and because of that, we need to expose our students to certain topics. Also, I agree, it's always devastating. I, as a teacher, I had a car CPS before, I'm still shaking from that. It's devastating to see that and to have kids you work with that have been sexually assaulted. And I think because of that, it is important to give them access to certain books that explain rape. And therefore, they can learn what are the signs, what are the predators, what do they look like, what do I feel like? Or they can hear from it, reading about it, knowing I'm not alone. And with that, I understand also, sexuality content is different for each person and for each parent. Everyone has a different threshold, maybe. I come from Germany. Apparently, the threshold is low, but here, when I came first here, and I watched Titanic, and I was a teenager, and I was like, huh, that's interesting, a scene is missing, the car scene. And I wondered why, and I understood, okay, it's part of the American culture to be more conservative, to be more prudish, even though on the other hand, it's one of the highest countries that has the highest teenage birth rate, but still, it's something that's part of the American culture, and we don't need to change that. We, but I think we can definitely find a common ground, and for example, the opt-in versus opt-out. If you automatically opt everyone in, and those people who are concerned about sexuality content, about gender, they can opt-out. That is a parental right. If you're very concerned about it, just sign the form, say, "opt-out," and that's good enough. Whereas other kids who may not tell their parents about something that happened to them, they don't want to talk about, but maybe they need to read about it in a book, like an assault, they can still get access to those books and opt-in. Therefore, I think we still need to look at opting in versus opting out, changing it to opting, opting in automatically for everyone, and those who wish to opt-out, opt-out. Secondly, the gender issue. I understand there is varied opinions about that, but I have to say, again, the world changed. It's a good thing that we're moving forward, that there's things we realize. Everyone is a person. Everyone deserves to be seen as a person. It doesn't matter what you look like. Doesn't matter if you're black or white. Doesn't matter who you love. You need to be treated with respect. You don't need to be friends with them, but you need to respect them. And I think by taking away those books with the gender issue, we don't respect these community members, and I'm hoping we can change to opt-in for everyone automatically instead of opting out. Thank you so much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, I'd like to welcome Beth Christensen. Thank you for coming tonight. You have five minutes.
I didn't purposely sign up right after Greta, but that works in perfectly. Good evening. My name's Beth Christensen, forty-ninety Woodland Ridge Court, parent of two BHS students. I'm probably going to read this straight off the page, because public speaking is a minor nightmare of mine, but I feel strongly enough about some aspects of Board Policy Fifty-seven Eighty that I wouldn't feel right if I didn't stand up today. I am relieved to see that the classroom instruction aspect of the policy has been clarified to specify an opt-out stance, in the sense that a parent has to reply for their child to be restricted from curriculum materials. I'm here to ask you to apply that same logic to the libraries. Specifically, it's alarming to see that we now have dozens of books removed from their age-appropriate school libraries due to the existence of trans characters or stories of real trans lives. I'm here as a parent of kids who do not identify as queer. I do identify as Christian. I'm also here, very unofficially, as leader in two different scouting organizations, with the responsibility to help raise good citizens who are equipped to contribute and thrive in the world around them. There are actual merit badges about accepting and working with different viewpoints. They're the product of lots of thought and research. I believe that erasing any reference to transgender people, particularly in the BMS library, is not only a significant overreach from state policy and putting the district on shaky legal footing, but also risks hampering all students' growth as members of society. The fact is, regardless of individual beliefs, our children will meet all sorts of people in this world. They can do so from a place of basic knowledge and understanding, or from unfamiliarity and discomfort. They can do so through published, vetted, age-appropriate stories, or through TikTok or YouTube, or a real-world encounter that they might not handle well if they're caught by surprise. When my Girl Scouts were in sixth grade, one of their camp counselors introduced another staff member with they/them pronouns. That was a little new to some of them, but it changed nothing. It disturbed no one. Once in a while, someone flopped the pronouns, and at least once, that someone was me, but they had caring people modeling good behaviors for them, and they had a great camp experience. I bet many of your kids have had a similar experience already, but not everyone gets a relatively controlled setting like that, and that's where a book could really help. No one I know has changed their gender identity because exposure to someone trans at an impressionable age made them want to. It's not something you do to go along. But does that kind of exposure give kids a small demonstration that different doesn't have to be bad or scary? I'd like to think so. That should be what we're trying to teach, and early enough that it sinks in. And we do teach that in many ways. Do kids come home from learning about world religions at BMS and tell parents that they're Buddhist now? Probably not that often, and in any case, that's not being raised as a concern. Why is this different? Parents are overwhelmingly the biggest influence on their children. There's plenty of research on that topic. A book won't change that. If a parent wants to impress upon their child that the gender assigned at birth is the only natural or God-given way to move through the world, I'll disagree, but I'll absolutely concede that that's their right. But if reading a book that presents a different perspective can shake that foundation so seismically, how strong can it really be? In the language we use in my line of work, what is the specific hazard that we're trying to mitigate? If any of the concern over a clear opt-out policy for those who want one is rooted in worry about kids being singled out for their parents' choice, please consider the deep irony embedded in that stance. Making a few kids feel uncomfortable or helicoptered for a moment in a library versus making LGBTQ kids feel wrong and alone because books that show people like them are considered inappropriate by their own school, these are not on the same level. These books are not propaganda. They're glimpses in other lives. That's how kids learn compassion, not conversion. Middle school is a crucial and incredibly turbulent time in childhood development. It's when tolerance and kindness are most critical and in shortest supply to themselves and to others. By trying to hide away even the existence of non-binary and trans people until high school at the earliest, you're hammering home that distant, that different is bad, until it might be too late for straight and cis kids to respond well when they encounter a different perspective in the real world, and too late for kids who are questioning themselves to establish their self-worth. Parents do have rights. Those rights do not include restricting other people's children based on their beliefs. Opt-out is effective, costs nothing, and is all you need. Please return the gender segregated books to BMS and restrict them only from children whose parents have formally requested it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, I, I am so sorry. I'm not sure, I might need to take a guess at the signature. Starts with a J or an L, um, Jundee Lift? Jacob Light. I am so sorry. It's a good-looking signature. It really is. All right, Mr. Jacob Light, thank you for being here. You have five minutes.
Thank you so much. I'm glad to be here today and be able to speak. I really wanted to thank each and every one of you guys. I've seen a lot of, I guess, growth and maturity come forth in the whole board, and I've been really, really encouraged to be able to see what you guys are able to do, to see a difference in your guys' even to me, or between the first time that I came out and when you guys spoke on the issue of the Parents' Bill of Rights, it was really encouraging to see the unity and the moving forward, and we've been really encouraged to see some of the impact of what everything that you put together there was able to do in these kids' lives. So I'm really happy and glad to be here, and really thank every one of you guys that have pushed forward, and kind of as some of these people have said, to push forward in what you guys believe and to stand firm in that and be able to make some, some real stands and changes that I personally never thought a school system could do. So I've been really encouraged to see the state that the school system has come from, as I grew up in Belbruck. And to see it, where it's going and where it's at has been such an encouragement to me, and like I said, really, I never could have imagined that the school board and the school system could be in the place that it is right now. And I'm very, very encouraged and very thankful for each and every one of you. So thank you for serving. Have a good day.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, I'd like to welcome Jackson Bruckart.
Thank you for being here, and you have five minutes. Good evening. My name is Jackson Bruckart. I live in Sugar Creek Township, and I'm currently a junior at Belbruck High School. I'm speaking here with regards to the Board Policy Fifty-seven Eighty, which removed books that contained explicit content and encouraged awareness of gender identity and sexuality from the libraries and curriculums of the K-38 schools. I would first like to thank the board for all the hard work that they have put into this subject. Now to begin, I want to address the impracticality of keeping these explicit books in our school systems. I can confidently assure you that the vast majority of the young kids at these schools have parents or other guardians that would be against the exposure of this mature content to their young children. According to a recent national survey, sixty percent of parents believe school libraries should restrict book access by age, showing that a majority of families are concerned about what their young children are exposed to. Parents who do wish that their children are educated with this sort of material, I'll let you in on a little secret. We have a public library and endless online resources where you can get all the content you wish to teach your children. Your choice for your household is respected, but it should not dictate what is, what is placed in front of hundreds of other children who are not your responsibility. A second point I want to allude to is the unhealthiness that these books bring to the children. Research in child development is overwhelmingly clear. When kids are asked to carry adult-level questions, they, while they are still growing, rates of confusion, stress, and emotional instability rise sharply. We are not talking about harmless ideas here. We are talking about concepts that can seriously disrupt the child's sense and mental health. This widespread push to redefine understanding of gender identity and promote earlier awareness of sexuality is a social epidemic with lasting consequences. It runs counter to the conservative values that have helped form and sustain our great nation. Parents should be able to expect their schools to value and protect the innocence of their children for the preservation of the next generation. I will close with this. These innocent children do not need schools presenting them with this explicit and mature content while some of them are still struggling to tie their own shoes. If we tell these young boys that they can be whatever gender they want to be, in ten years, they will be the same young men going into your daughter's locker rooms. They will be the same young men dominating in girl sports because we lied to them, telling them that they could be something that they are not. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, I'd like to welcome Meredith Brenniger. Thank you for being here. You have five minutes.
Great. My name is Meredith Brenniger. I live in Belbruck, and I have a child in the district. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I have continued concerns with Policy Fifty-seven Eighty, specifically the parts that go well beyond the state law that was passed this spring. I am troubled by the removal of books from the BCI and BMS libraries in particular. One hundred percent of the books removed from BCI were due to gender ideology, which our district has decided means the presence of characters who are trans, non-binary, or gender-fluid. Do you know how many books were removed in, from age three to, uh, through fifth grade that had sex in it? None. None. Um, and my understanding is that the, the books that were removed from BMS, they were split between gender ideology and sexual concepts, and I think even at the middle school, the YA books that have the sexual content were, um, in a separate section for eighth graders. So why does this trouble me? Why am I not placated by the district's response, reassurance that these books have merely been relocated to the high school? Well, the short answer is that the students in grades three to eight cannot access these books anymore. Yes, some students who are at the high school may appreciate these books, either because of their reading level or social maturity, but zero students at BCI and BMS can access them when they are at the age most of these books were intended for. By the time they reach high school, most want to check, won't want to check a book out about a sixth grader. Let's dig deeper. Why do I worry about limiting access to books? You know, I keep imagining myself as a seventh grader who sits next to a non-binary student and who may have questions. Books that center the experiences of non-binary or trans characters can offer understanding and promote acceptance and kindness. Books that include trans characters as side or incidental characters are equally as important. Kind of like how books with people of color don't have to be about race. They simply feature a range of characters and show people in their full humanity doing everyday things. And we know that bullying and violence often occur when people are othered, when they are dehumanized. Now, I can also imagine myself as a transgender eighth grader. If the school suddenly says these books are not appropriate for middle schoolers, what does that say about me? That I'm not appropriate? That books about trans people are dangerous and will harm students who read them? We know that most trans individuals will have questioned their gender identity by middle school. We could argue it's exactly when students need these books. Middle schoolers are going through two things at once, puberty and individuation. Books can ease the angst of a difficult time in a much, in a much safer way than content accessed by phone. Uh, parents, I'd also encourage you, check out your kids' Spotify, uh, what's the year thing that comes out? The, your, your Spotify Wrapped, right? That you might be, uh, find that interesting. Anyway, while my examples are hypothetical, the trans and non-binary students in our schools are very real. It's a different world now, and the books in our libraries should reflect that. My fear is that if this policy isn't changed, it will also impact the purchasing of future books related to sex and gender. Another concern I have about limiting books is that it impacts the freedoms of our broader society. I'm going to borrow the words of Greg Lukianoff, who has spent his entire legal career defending the First Amendment. He's the co-author of the book The Coddling of the American Mind, which was critical of censorship from universities. And he's not wrong that attempts to censor free speech come from both the political left and the right. In an interview that aired just last week, I heard it in the car, he said, "You're not a free people if you don't have free speech. It's as simple as that." And people who are in favor of censorship, they really are telling you, "Don't be yourself. Don't be authentic. Lie if you need to. Betray what you actually believe." Even if they think they're doing it for the absolute best reasons in the world, and usually they do, "In most of human history, the censors think they're on the side of goodness and right," end quote. Lukianoff goes on to say that allowing free speech affords informational power, that we cannot know what our society and world looks like if people are afraid to say what they really think. I mean, if we are removing books like The Fifty-Seven Bus, a nonfiction book about a hate crime, are we whitewashing history? Are we closing our eyes to parts of our world we don't like or disagree with? Now, I suspect the board feels they are on the side of right. I disagree that exposure to books with characters who are trans is something to be protected against, but I can imagine that if I had deeply held beliefs about gender, such as a god making man and woman in his image, I could imagine how books that challenge this could feel very threatening. I encourage the board to consider a solution that honors all parents' rights. If you don't want your child to have access to books with sex or transgender characters, we now have a list obtained through a public records request. You can also find this information on the high school card catalog. I was poking around, and I saw that, I think it's under, like, categories or something. You can click on that, and all the, the books that are at the high school have it. You can see what for gender or for sex. I imagine the other schools could do that if you put those books back. Um, and so that way- Um, and so that way, parents can easily opt out of the books on the list. We've made it easy. And parents who do want their kids to have access to these books can also have their rights honored. This is a solution where all sides win. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Up next, we'd like to welcome Allison Visigani. Thank you for being here. You have five minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I am a little nervous today, uh, just because I really appreciate that you guys spend your time and energy being on the board. Um, I really know that it is a hard job. Um, my dad did it for many years before. I understand that and I really do appreciate it. And I don't want to, I don't want to knock somebody, but it's really hard when there are public comments being made. Um, and then there's no way to respond to them. And so that's where I'm coming from with this. Um, before I started, I also wanted to mention, um, that in the third to fifth grade, there, the librarians look through, there's nothing about sex in those books. There's nothing. It's, there were five books. There were, because there was a transgender character, there isn't sex for these third graders and fifth graders. There just isn't. Um, our librarians have done a really good job making sure there's age-appropriate books. Okay, so I wanted to address some of the public posts about books that the school board, a school board member has put on social media. These posts are misleading to the public and I'm concerned because they're a public representative of our school. The first concerning post puts Pinocchio noses and the word "false" on a post from, um, Belrock United for Public Education. The original post says, "Share the facts. Belrock Sugar Creek School District or Board recently adopted Policy 5780 forcing thirty-seven books to be removed from our libraries. As far as we can tell, no other school, Ohio School District has done this. Let's talk about what this means for our students." And then it has a list of the books that were removed from BCI and BMS. Belrock Sugar Creek Schools have four libraries listed on their website, one at each school. A public records request does reveal that five books have been removed from the BCI library and thirty-two books were removed from the BMS library. All the books have been moved to the high school library. However, they were removed from BCI and BMS libraries. Books were removed from the two libraries at our schools. So what is the lie? The second concerning post says, "Books Everyone," and a link to school board, the school board meeting where Ms. Pryor talks about donating the books, "Swimming Against the Current," to the high school. The post implies that our school librarians are restricting access to some viewpoints. For context, the link goes to where Ms. Pryor made a public statement on the October ninth board meeting, saying she donated "Swimming Against the Current" because there are zero books in the high school library about the downsides of gender transitioning. She said the librarian read it and found it not appropriate for the high school. Ms. Pryor was concerned that the librarian was limiting books with different viewpoints from the library. Because I was concerned about her statement, saying that the books were being limited, I emailed the high school librarian, who referred me to Dr. Cozad, to answer my question. Dr. Cozad said, "Each donated book is considered for inclusion on the, for the school library by both the building administrator and school librarian utilizing their professional expertise. My understanding is that at this time, the reference book has not been included in the collection in part because it lacks professional reviews and recommendations from school librarian associations. I have looked at the high school collection and found that the book, "On Side or Offside: Women's Sport and Transgender Inclusion: The Counterbiological Argument", shows the viewpoint expressed in "Swimming Against the Current." I don't know if there's any others, but there is at least one book currently in the high school library with that viewpoint. I am frustrated that these inaccurate posts are still active with no ability to share accurate information. Facts do matter, and I expect more from our school board and community. I hope we can find common ground with these issues and I do wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I have one more name on my list, so I'd like to welcome Rachel Brucker. Thank you for being here tonight. You have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Rachel Brucker and I live in Sugar Creek Township. Like many of you, my family is deeply invested in Belrock Schools. My husband and I have five kids who have been or are in the district. I want to take a few minutes to share why we fully support school board policy 5780. Uh, my kids started here eleven years ago. And like most parents in the district, I did not want my young kids reading, um, books or having accidental exposure to books with explicit content or gender ideology. Back then, getting that information and having a clear option to opt out was difficult and inconsistent. I'm thankful this policy has removed these types of books from the elementary and middle school libraries and classrooms. They remain available in the high school, and as a taxpayer, I am disappointed our money was spent to buy this sort of material for the schools in the first place. I appreciate the opt-in requirement of this policy. At the beginning of the school year, we were notified our sophomore would be assigned the book Poet X. Our family, along with dozens of other parents, decided our children would not be participating in the three-week study of the book. This opt-in policy made parental notification very clear. Uh, thank you also for including a reorganization of the high school library, um, and for separating books with explicit content. This is important because when teens are selecting books for their required classes, they should not be unknowingly ambushed by materials that conflicts with their values. Uh, this choice respects their moral agency, so thank you. In our changing education landscape, board policy 5780 is forward-thinking for our school's long-term success. Um, as a homeschool mom of eleven years, I also keep up with the growing trends of homeschooling within our local area. And homeschooling in the state is at the highest levels ever, even higher than during COVID right now. An estimated five percent of Ohio students are homeschooled and close to ten percent are using EdChoice vouchers. This represents a massive shift of students away from public schools. A major factor driving this growth is the desire for parents' rights and a greater assurance regarding curriculum, especially around sensitive topics and gender content. Since the district loses state funding when students are homeschooled or use vouchers, this trend presents a clear financial challenge. So by establishing policy 5780, this board is being proactive. Implementing transparency and assuring parental rights is essential if our district hopes to remain competitive, retain enrollment, and secure its long-term financial stability. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for your comments tonight. So we have exhausted our list. I really appreciate everybody who came to speak tonight. And I am closing over open communication for this evening, which means we move into tonight's superintendent's report.
For those of you who are wondering about the mass exodus, I think most of this is due to, the AP government class at the high school gives these kids extra credit for sitting through this mess, so they're not just fed up. They, uh, have exceeded their one-hour requirement. Exam week's coming. I think a lot of extra credit might be necessary.
All right, um, we will get started on seven A, B, and C, so seven A, Certified License Employment, Resignationally of Absence, Supplemental Duty, Pupil Activity. And then seven B is Support Staff Employment, Resignationally of Absence. And then seven C is Substitute Employment, uh, for just, this is for first semester, uh, one individual.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson.
And this is seven D, Approval of the Consent Agenda. So we just have a few short-term contracts on paid leave of absence and just one sub in this, uh, in this consent agenda for your consideration.
Any questions?
Are we doing okay on subs, Dr. Cozad?
Yep, we're doing, we're doing okay.
Please call the, the.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, so seven E is Substitute Employment, recommend approval of substitute staff personnel on an as-needed basis for the second semester of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, and then Dr. Pryor?
Guess I should have looked ahead. Thanks.
Yeah, again, this is second. This, the one was for first semester, this one is second semester.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Uh, is this the one?
Yes.
So abstained.
Yes.
My wife is on that list, so.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Four yeses, one abstained.
Anything else, sir?
Nope, at this point.
All right, up next is item eight A on our agenda. I am making a motion to rec, well, I'm, I am moving that we approve an employment contract for Dr. Douglas A. Cozad, Superintendent of Schools, commencing August first, twenty-twenty-six at Step Ten through July thirty-first, twenty-thirty-one. Does my motion have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Price. Any discussion?
I was on the fence, but he gave us a snow day last week, so I was.
We're on opposite sides of the table regarding snow days, just so you know.
Please call the roll.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Incredibly difficult job, sir. Appreciate what you do and looking forward to another five years.
Thank you. Thank you and the board for your past support and thank you for your continued support. Um, I appreciate it and just working as hard as I can to continue our five-star school district, so appreciate it. Thank you.
It's only like an eighteen-hour-a-day, seven-day week job, so.
That's it, yes.
Appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, eight B, Job Description, Job Description Revision, Recommend Adoption of Central Office Job Description for Client Device Administrator and Support Specialist.
Moved.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, and then I think I heard Mrs. Anderson.
Again, this was on the last, uh, agenda as a first read, so this is a second read for approval.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, uh, modifications to central office salary schedule, uh, voluntary transfers. Approved modifications to this central office salary schedule through FY twenty-twenty-seven, and voluntary transfers effective, uh, January first, twenty-twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, then Mrs. Anderson.
Um, again, so this, this is obviously, um, connected to the previous, uh, you know, uh, job description where we are moving a few folks around in our technology department to better align with their, their skills. So we're not adding any staff. We're just switching, uh, one individual to that new, uh, Client Device Administrator Support Specialist and moving the other individual from a, a tech support to technology, um, systems analyst.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Uh, meeting calendar, so recommend approval of the twenty-twenty-six meeting calendar of the Belrock Sugar Creek Local Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Pryor, then Mrs. Anderson.
Again, this is on the last meeting as a first read, uh, so this is, uh, for final read for approval. Again, fairly aligns with, um, what we've done in the past, especially last year. And we'll again make those, uh, second meetings, uh, quarter meetings more focused on presentations and so forth. And it won't always align up, line up with that, but we'll do my best to have presentations and so forth on those meetings and try to keep other business off of that meeting.
Um, I, I have one small question.
Sure.
It's for a met. Um, the June thirtieth meeting is always basically a treasurer's meeting, right? Cause that's kind of our fiscal year closeout. Is doing that at four o'clock in the afternoon give you enough time to do what you need to do that day?
I should have enough time. I think by June twenty-ninth, I'll know if you need anything, so I'll have everything done by June twenty-ninth.
Okay, don't you have to submit, like, I thought, we used to do it at eight o'clock in the morning cause you had to submit a bunch of things after we voted. Is that, you're good, like?
As long as you approve it, it's legal.
Okay.
Because you're the legal authority, so I can submit it once you approve it. So as long as you do it by June thirtieth, I can submit it on July first.
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you. That answers my question. I didn't want to keep you at work until late on that day. Got it.
Any other questions about the calendar? Please call the roll for another year of fun.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Okay, uh, the next one, uh, same thing we do every year as we roll over the calendar year. Um, I am making a motion, uh, I am making affirmation of motion number twenty-five dash five, naming incumbent board president as President Pro Tem at the annual organizational meeting, which is on January eighth, twenty-twenty-six, until duly reappointed by associate board members or replaced by a duly elected successor. Does my motion have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Pryor. Weird nerd Roberts rule stuff that we have to do before our January meeting. Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Next is High School Handbook Revision, Recommend Approval of Revision to High School Student Parent Handbook effective January first, twenty-twenty-second, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-six to reflect the new cellphone use policy fifty-one thirty-six, um, for students in grades nine to twelve per Ohio Department of Education and workforce.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, then Mrs. Anderson.
I can't believe one of these high school kids didn't get up to talk about this. I was waiting for one of them. This is a way bigger deal to them than anything about the library, I promise.
Does it need to say anything about, like, the health reasons people will have their cellphones?
So, so that is in the policy, so that will.
I know it's in the policy. I, is it, does it need to be here? I mean, I, you know, as long.
I think we're, I think we're fine. It's in the policy.
The kids, you know who the kids are.
Yes, those will definitely, for medical reasons, those were definitely allowed. So those are, that's in the policy, so. That will definitely be allowed. Yeah.
My kids ask me if calculators were allowed. That depends on the.
Regular calculator? I think so, yes.
Back to slide rules. Yeah.
And send lots of good thoughts to Mr. Han as he, uh, implements this policy.
All right, that was moved by Mrs. Dorn, seconded by Mrs. Anderson. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, let's call the roll.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, acceptance donations, uh, acceptance of the following donations with gratitude. Anna Nysley, Patrick Fisher, three-hundred-and-seventy-dollar donation to BHS Golf in memory of Darren Wilson. Jacqueline Williams, a hundred-dollar donation to BHS Golf in memory of Darren Wilson. Phyllis Klein, two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation to Families in Need at Bell Creek Intermediate. And the Belrock Sugar Maple Festival Committee, a thousand-dollar donation to Bell Creek Intermediate for Veterans Day Celebration.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, then Mrs. Anderson. Very, very generous.
Yep.
The district very much appreciates it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please call the roll, accepting with gratitude.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes, thank you.
Five yeses.
Uh, sure. Yeah, so next, uh, just, uh, a few minutes if we want to share. Um, every year, we have the opportunity as part of our membership in the Ohio School Board Association to attend their annual Capitol Conference in Columbus, Ohio. Um, lots of different presentations and discussions. You can join. We all kind of try to split up a little bit and go to stuff. Uh, I'll just, I'll jump it off, I guess. I'll go first. Um, I hit hot and heavy, just legislative updates, court case updates, especially funding updates. Um, very informative. Definitely got to hear the newest, latest, and greatest lay of the land. I, nothing we're not already aware of that's maybe been shared in some of our legislative updates. Um, but it was helpful to hear what was most current. Who wants to go next?
I'll go next. Um, I attended several breakout sessions on Sunday and Monday. Um, Sunday I attended, like, Communicate. Um, Sunday I attended, like, communicating with your community. Um, I think what struck me the most is just what a great job that our communications department has been doing, just bringing on Mister Conti has really improved our communication. Always room for improvement still, but, um, I just, to listen to some of these other districts and boards talk, I'm just like, that would never fly with Henry, so. I'm just very thankful, made me very thankful for you, so. Um, I also had the opportunity to, um, go to some of the, um, legislative updates as well, as well as the first general session with, which was John Keone's, um, from twenty-twenty. Um, he was very inspirational about his life as an immigrant in our country and what he faced. It was very eye-opening and it just, he was a really great speaker. Um, and then on Monday, I had to, got to, I guess, attend the delegate meeting. Um, the delegate meeting had, um, it's where the, the, each school board sends a representative and we all talk about what we want the platforms to be. A lot of it is pre-chosen, but there were some, um, modifications and some, um, amendments that wanted, that people wanted, school districts proposed. One was from Berea, one was from Fort, uh, Fort Frye local, and one was from Valley local. Um, so basically, they argued for six hours why that should be added or subtracted, and in the end, they voted not to do anything, so. It was definitely eye-opening as far as Roberts rules go. Definitely learned some things that we might be able to use, so. But yes, the, uh, agenda items and the planks that they go and advocate for are, will remain the same, so.
Well, I attended, um, several classes, sessions, civil rights guidance, OSBA legislative update, essential policies for twenty-twenty-six, board member advocacy, and a case law update. And the most interesting and relevant thing for us in the case law update class, they talked about the case Little versus Lano County case in Texas, where, um, some library patrons sued a public library for removing seventeen books. Um, they said removing the book violated their freedom of speech because it infringed their right to receive information. Well, the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled against them and said, "The right to receive information does not apply to public library books." They specifically said, "No one is banning or burning books. If a disappointed patron can't find a book in the library, he can order it online or get it from a bookstore." So, this decision was appealed to the United States Supreme Court, and they actually just decided Monday that they were not gonna hear it.
Correct.
That decision stands. Now, that's the Fifth Circuit. We're in the Sixth Circuit, so, anyway. I just thought that was interesting that was talked about at the meeting.
Any other comments anyone wants to share?
Um, I wasn't able to, to attend this year, unfortunately. I always enjoy going and get a lot out of it, but since I'm a federal employee, um, the federal government decided to open it back up, like, two days before the conference, and it was probably not great with me and my boss to take two more days of vacation immediately after, like, a federal government reopen, so. That might have been the same. Hopefully next year.
Couple things. I always enjoy at the OSBA, going around and visiting, uh, with the vendors to see what they have, and, uh, and without going into detail, uh, those type of visits in years past have led to some of the security enhancements we have in our school system. Uh, there were some additional, or at least one additional thing I noticed, uh, up there that I would, it may well find its way into our school district as far as, uh, as an additional, um, security and safety enhancement for our district, so I always appreciate that. So from a positive perspective, that's, that's a, you know, I really enjoy that and, uh, took away that, once again, that, that benefit again this year. One thing, though, that was, I, I found frankly depressing was, uh, when they talked about the current, uh, well, uh, efforts to reduce property taxes across the state, and, uh, the way the state is doing that, uh, it's gonna have a miniscule effect upon people's property taxes across the state. Whatever effect it does have will come at the expense of schools, and really, it's just a, um, it's a distraction. Um, the state is doing this, the state is in a frenzy because they're terrified that this movement afoot to literally repeal and, um, uh, I guess, uh, constitutionally remove property taxes from, from us in the state of Ohio, I think they're terrified that that's going to pass, and it may well. If it does, it's gonna be a nuclear weapon, uh, across the state in terms of not just schools, but police and fire in our townships and our cities. And, uh, so the state right now, I think, is just, is just, uh, basically, uh, trying to convince the people across the state that they're serious about reducing ta, uh, property taxes, and trust me, they aren't. Uh, it, it's miniscule to no effect, uh, almost everyone, and get any effect, impact it does have, it's going to further reduce what we get from the state in this district. And, and I think that's, that's typical across the state, so, um, they've invited this upon themselves. Uh, we may have a, a monumental historical event next November, and then, uh, we're all gonna have to deal with it. Um, but, uh, again, um, if you look at our district, about fifty-five percent of our, uh, property taxes go to schools. I think that's fairly representative throughout the state, uh, as far as a percentage of, you know, actually what goes to the schools, and so that number has been increasing and increasing and increasing over the years. As I understand it, back in the nineteen-eighties, this district got on the order of sixty percent of its funding from the state. Now we're down to about twenty-two percent, and, uh, and it, it, it varies across the state as far as an average, and I think, and as a result, people, the people that can least afford it, people that are retired, people that are on fixed income, are disproportionately and grievously affected by continuing property taxes. So again, the state has brought this upon themselves. It's gonna be very interesting to see what happens November, if it makes it on the ballot and if it passes, but don't be, um, I guess, deluded into thinking they're doing wonderful things for your tax bill, cause they're not. And, uh, you'll see headlines out there that's like, oh, two-point-five billion dollars or whatever saved over, they won't really tell you it's over years and not just in one year. And, uh, so I, I didn't see any hope for anything that was set up there, and these people were just messengers. They are not making the policy. Um, and so I, I think it's, uh, it's gonna be an interesting year ahead as far as what happens, so.
And Merry Christmas to all.
Yes. Yeah, well, it'll be, we'll see what kind of Christmas we have next year if they-
Kevin's gonna round it out with a big bummer.
If that passes in November of next year, so.
Any other comments? All right, then at this time, uh, do we have one more?
Yeah, one more.
So, January twenty-fourth, agenda items, topics for discussion. That's our, um, Saturday retreat. We retreat all the way to this room, again. But I, kind of a, a time where we have more discussion and talking and, and so, district goals, or this is the last year of our district goals, so, um, I just, I think it's worthy for some discussion and thoughts on that. And looking for other things that we wanna add to the agenda. Again, we can add them from January eighth. I'll, I'll put it on that agenda also, but just to get people thinking, if you don't know right now.
Easy one is, we always extend an invitation to our teachers' union. I'd like to see that again, or maybe if there's other groups within the school, but certainly extend to our, to our two unions, or our teachers' union.
Okay.
And I know sometimes we, we come up with topics for that, but I'd be interested in what, what they, topics they might have. I know we've reached out to them, talked to them about policy fifty-seven eighty over the last year a couple times and whatnot. I'd be curious if, if they have any topics that they'd like to raise. It seems like sometimes we raise the topics, so.
Okay, I can definitely reach out to them. Invite them.
I think we should probably proactively just start thinking about our current funding. If we are facing a cliff, what are we going to do about that? Are we just gonna just fall over and just wait for the state? I mean, I would be interested to hear, you know, Mister Gotham's take on, you know, what our options would be, just to just be proactive. Like, if the state's not gonna fix it, maybe we should lead the pack and proactively look at some options.
Um, sometimes we kind of, we, the board, kind of request some education from all of you, and, um, ha, ha, even having been on the board now for me almost five years, something I still may, that, could you educate us more on supplementals and how they're paid and how we decide which one, which things, how many there are? How does this team get this many coats? Like, could you give me some insight into how that process works? Cause I'd feel deficient in my knowledge. And maybe that's a conversation we can even have while the, if the union accepts our invitation, talk to them. I know, I mean, I know that contract kind of identifies all of that, but how it's put into practice is, seems like a very complex process that could use some clarity in my head.
We can do that?
Anything else for now?
Yeah, I can put that, I'll put this on the January eighth agenda also, so we can see if anybody else has further thoughts at that point, too.
And I think if our admin team, like, has any needs or if, if we wanna meet, maybe, I know we meet with the union, but I don't think we've ever extended the invitation to the admin team, if they would like to have a few minutes, you know, of our time.
We good?
Yep.
All right. Am I about to skip anything?
Nope.
All right, at this time, I am making a motion to move to executive session for the purpose of reviewing details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body per RC one-two-one dot two-two G six. Does my motion have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Doctor Pryor. Um, we do not anticipate taking any action or making any decisions whatsoever after this, um, so you're welcome to stick around if you like. Uh, however, if not, really appreciate everybody coming. Thank you. So, please call the roll to move to executive session.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Mister Kinsey?
Yes.
Mister Price?
Yes.
Doctor Pryor?
Yes.
Five yeses.
All right, we're in executive session at eight-twenty-seven PM.
All right, you're on. We're good?
Yep.
All right, we are out of executive session at 9:02 PM. I am making a motion to adjourn. Is my motion up second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dorn. Please call Will to adjourn.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Dr. Breyer?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned at 9:02 PM. Thanks everybody.